Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hill Board of Adjustment. Today is Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, and it is 7:00 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of the meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Role call. We have Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Goskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairwoman Grignani.
Present.
We have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Board engineer, Mr. Lemanowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as it is.
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you can, sit down, make sure you use the microphone, and just state each of your names and spell your last name, please.
Sure. Michael Nemeth, N-E-M-E-T-H.
And Jessica Nemeth, N-E-M-E-T-H.
Now, I understand that you're here asking the board to legalize some work that you've already done, is that right?
Correct.
Gazebos, some walks, patios, driveways, things of that nature. Have you received the August 15th, 2025 memorandum from the township engineer?
We did, and we actually supplied a new one from yesterday.
Yes, you have a copy.
I have one here if you need it.
November 3rd, we have.
Okay, excellent.
Which of you are to choose these options?
I talked to Paul, the engineer, we're going to go the rain barrel route, just to keep it clean. I think it's three 50-gallon rain barrels to collect the runoff from the 82 overreach.
So why don't you just tell the board what it is that you did?
Sure.
Why you did it and why you need the variance.
Sure, so we added a small patio, tore out what the original, the house was a mess overall, but there was a bunch of old decking up against the property line, we pulled all that out, replaced it off the property line with a small patio, and then all we did was strip the blacktop from the driveway, actually made the driveway smaller and replaced it with pavers.
So you actually improved the condition from what was there?
Correct.
When did you buy the house?
2020, January of 2020.
It was all that stuff that you just redid all there when you bought the house?
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, it was already on the property.
This is an asphalt driveway, you made that all pavers?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Yeah, we've done it all ourselves, so it's been.
You did it yourself?
Lots of sweat equity, it'll be worth it.
Okay.
We have any questions from the board of this applicant? No. Is there anyone in the audience that has questions of this applicant on the testimony that they have just given us? I see none. Is there anyone in favor of this application in the audience? I see none. Anyone that is not in agreement of this application? I see none. Would someone like to frame a resolution, please?
I think this is the minimus in nature, and they improved the conditions, took out blacktop, and put in pavers, which allows the water to run through it, so I'll be voting for it. Application 25:27, Michael and Jessica Nemeth, 289 Allentown Road, Block 271, Lot 23, Zone R4, recommend granting a C variance to legalize a gazebo, rear walk, patio and driveway contrary to Sections 430-35, Column 13. This application is carried from September the 10th, 2025.
Good evening.
Can you raise your right hands, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If you can, sit down, make sure you use the microphone, and just state each of your names and spell your last name, please.
Sure. Michael Nemeth, N-E-M-E-T-H.
And Jessica Nemeth, N-E-M-E-T-H.
Now, I understand that you're here asking the board to legalize some work that you've already done, is that right?
Correct.
A gazebo, some walks, patios, driveways, things of that nature. Have you received the August 15th, 2025 memorandum from the township engineer?
We did, and we actually supplied a new one from yesterday.
Yes, you have a copy.
I have one here if you need it.
November 3rd, we have.
Okay, excellent.
Which of you are to choose these options?
I talked to Paul, the engineer, we're going to go the rain barrel route, just to keep it clean. I think it's three 50-gallon rain barrels to collect the runoff from the 82 overreach.
So why don't you just tell the board what it is that you did?
Sure.
Why you did it and why you need the variance.
Sure, so we added a small patio, tore out what the original, the house was a mess overall, but there was a bunch of old decking up against the property line, we pulled all that out, replaced it off the property line with a small patio, and then all we did was strip the blacktop from the driveway, actually made the driveway smaller and replaced it with pavers.
So you actually improved the condition from what was there?
Correct.
When did you buy the house?
2020, January of 2020.
It was all that stuff that you just redid all there when you bought the house?
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, it was already on the property.
This is an asphalt driveway, you made that all pavers?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Yeah, we've done it all ourselves, so it's been.
You did it yourself?
Lots of sweat equity, it'll be worth it.
We have any questions from the board of this applicant? No. Is there anyone in the audience that has questions of this applicant on the testimony that they have just given us? I see none. Is there anyone in favor of this application in the audience? I see none. Anyone that is not in agreement of this application? I see none. Would someone like to frame a resolution, please?
I think this is the minimus in nature, and they improved the conditions, took out blacktop, and put in pavers, which allows the water to run through it, so I'll be voting for it. Application 25:27, Michael and Jessica Nemeth, 289 Allentown Road, Block 271, Lot 23, Zone R4, recommend granting a C variance to legalize a gazebo, rear walk, patio and driveway contrary to Sections 430-10C, shed side and rear yards. Section 430-35, Column 8, patio side yard. Section 430-275H, Section 430-275X, Section 430-35, Column 10, and Section 430-35, Column 13.
Whoa, we have a lot here. We have a lot.
Can you raise your right hands, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You can, you can be seated, make sure you use those microphones, and state your names and spell your last name, please.
Jabeen Raja, R-A-J-A.
Abdul Raja, R-A-J-A.
Could you please speak closer to the microphone, sir?
Abdul Raja.
Thank you.
R-A-J-A.
Now, I understand that you're here to legalize some improvements that you made to the property without getting a permit, is that right?
Yes.
Have you seen the township engineer's letter from September 22nd? Have you met with the township engineer?
No, they didn't see it. They didn't see it, I don't know, they sent us a letter, everything is seen. I don't know.
You're going to have to speak up.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you. Did you get a letter dated September 22nd, 2025, from the township engineer?
Nobody ever does that. Yeah, because he was here before.
He got him on the case.
September 22nd, 2025.
Sorry about that, he was holding all the papers, he did not know anything about it, I think.
Okay, I have an extra copy. Here you go. Okay.
Let me ask that question again, do you know whether you have met with the town engineer?
Did you have to meet the town engineer?
I think he said no.
So you haven't met with the town engineer?
No, only my lady can get the test [inaudible].
Okay, so the memo from the township engineer talks about your impervious coverage and the impact on stormwater management, and that you may have to, will have to, in fact, make substantial improvements in order to deal with stormwater. Okay? So it may be in your best interest to ask the board to reschedule your hearing so that you can meet with the township engineer and discuss what you might need to do to address those issues.
Okay. Is he talking to you or to us? Okay, he wants to, if he wanted to say, say.
I didn't get any [inaudible].
Then we would suggest that you meet with him before we proceed here, because if you will, if we proceed, you have to comply with the engineer's request, and it may cost you a lot of money, okay?
What, they told us to send a letter, certified letter, to every neighborhood and every.
That's nothing to do with it.
So you did work that created a problem, potential problem, with the water, and what the engineer is suggesting are corrections or things that you have to do to make it not a problem. You're going to have to do something. Our board is going to require you to do something, so you should figure that out, meet with the, call the engineer, set up a meeting with him, he'll, you'll have this discussion, you'll come up with a fix, and then you'll choose which of the fixes, if there are choices, for you to do.
So we have to call the engineer?
Yeah, that's right, the town engineer.
And have a meeting with him.
Yes, the office is Liza, Justin Liza.
The letter you now have?
Yeah.
It's named on the top of the list.
Okay, all right, this one, right?
Yeah, the one I just gave you, yep.
Okay, all right, so then we have to set the new date. You want, you don't want, we don't, can I explain why, what we did it?
It really wouldn't be of, it wouldn't be helpful right now.
Okay.
Ms. Jolie will give us a date when you should come back.
You should read that letter carefully before you go to the engineer's office.
Okay.
The point being, if you say why you did this, and we ended up approving this application, you would have to comply with the engineer's stuff, and maybe a lot more costly than something you want to do, okay? So we're trying to protect you as well as everything else here.
So when you, I'm sorry, Danny.
Go ahead.
So when you come back here, you should have a solution for the problem agreed upon between you and the engineer, the town engineer.
Okay.
Ms. Jolie, may we have a date, please?
We're going to carry you to February 4th, 2026, okay? Without further notice, but you do have to give us, you have to agree to an extension for the board, an extension of time of February 20, until February 28th, for the board to make a decision on your case.
Okay.
So you don't have to.
It has to be done before February.
You don't have to send the notices out again.
Okay.
Okay? Because if there were any members of the public here, they would be hearing your new date, okay? But you have to grant the board time to make its decision until after that hearing date. Do you do that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great.
So first we will call the engineer.
Nora, is that 7:30?
That would be 7:30.
Okay, yeah, 7:30.
So you just need a motion.
Motion, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so come back February 4th.
February 4th, okay.
Call to the engineer.
Thank you.
Application 25:64, Maria Ems and Elizabeth Carfiole, 170 Rainbow Trail, Block 109, Lot 25, Zone R3, a C variance to legalize front driveway pavers, paver patio and paver walks contrary to 430-275X and Section 430-35, Column 13. Good evening.
Can you raise your right hands, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Sit down, just state your name and spell your last name.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Carfiole, C-A-R-F-I-O-L-I.
And I'm Marie Ems, last name E-M-M-S.
Great, and I understand you're also here to legalize some improvements that you made to the property. There's an October 8th, 2025 memo from the township engineer, did you get that?
I don't recall receiving that.
Okay, here's a copy of it. I don't know if you heard the last application, but the same stormwater issue, mitigation issues in your situation have also been raised in your situation by the township engineer, so it may also be in your best interest to speak to the township engineer, see if you can come up with a solution to his concerns regarding stormwater management, which is why there are concerns about impervious coverage, because that's what creates issues regarding stormwater.
So we replaced what was already there that was broken, so when we bought the house two years ago, there were already pavers.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, sorry, I didn't know. So we've replaced pavers that were already there, that were broken, that were uneven, that were trip hazards, not extending the coverage in any way.
Okay, it sounds like maybe what someone had done before you purchased the property may have been done without the required permits.
Okay.
So they probably put something in, in terms of impervious coverage, pavers, patios, whatever, didn't get a permit, you buy the house not knowing that.
Correct, and, and we just replaced what was there because it was falling apart and just broken and dangerous.
What you gain from this is, at some juncture, you're going to sell the house, but you're going to have the paperwork to show that it's legal. Otherwise, somebody who does come and does their due diligence makes a big problem, so don't get it under the rug now.
So I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last piece.
Don't get it under the rug now.
No, I just wanted to make sure it was clear what.
You meet with the town engineer or his associate and explain to him what it was and whether or not there are any drainage issues that might be taken a look at and get it all straightened out there. If you were here for the first case, that's what they did.
Yeah.
They went over to the engineer, they found two options, and [inaudible].
Mr. Johnson, you gave them the letter?
Yep, you have a copy.
I have the letter, thank you so much.
Call them up, make an appointment, go on top.
Nora, would you please, may we have a date?
Take pictures with you because you probably may or may not be able to.
We do have photos of the original and then.
Yeah, show, show those to him, and explain exactly what you did, and then you can talk through what the solution might be in terms of stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Sorry, we're carrying you to February 11th.
February 11th?
Yep.
And you have to grant the board, you don't have to renotice, you don't have to send the notices out again, but you have to give the board an extension to make a decision until that date, okay? You're okay with that?
Okay with it, yes.
Okay.
Until, so, but on February 11th, we'll have a decision then?
Yeah.
As opposed to come back here?
Yeah, you come back here on February 11th, okay? You'll have met with the township engineer, you'll work out whatever issues there are to address, the stormwater management concerns that he has, and then, and then the board will get another letter from the township engineer, hopefully saying that you have met with him and you've agreed to address the situation and how you've agreed to address it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
So you just need a, you need a motion.
Yes, may I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ladies, good to see you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Sorry. Okay. Cheers.
Thank you.
Do you want to go on or you want to wait?
Well, you got, you got to wait for some, technically speaking, you got to sit for 10 minutes.
We done?
I don't believe so.
You're done with 7?
We're done with 7 o'clock.
I moved to a jar.
Hold on, no, we have no more.
Yeah, you need to move to it, you're on the 7.
Yes, there are no more applications. For 7 o'clock, we just heard.
Right.
That was the latest, we can close this.
One was carried.
This is the one, this is the one we did.
May I have a motion for adjournment, please?
Motion.
Oh, sorry about that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're on record.
I don't think he was.
Yep.
Gentlemen. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hill Board of Adjustment. It is Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, and it is 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of the meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-SEC, the open, of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Role call, Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Goskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
Chairwoman Grignani.
Present.
We have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
And engineer, Mr. Lemanowicz.
Here.
Here. Nope.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on something other than what is on our agenda this evening? I see none. Of course, I'm going to. Oh, yes, please, sir, come up.
I'm not sure, I'm here about a shed.
Is it on the agenda?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, is that, is that Mr. Balsara's application?
Yes, yes.
That'll be heard in a second.
Thank you.
Nora, correspondence, please.
Okay, we have correspondence received from Randolph Delara, requesting application 2561, be carried from November 5th, 2025, to January 7th, 2026, without further notice, with publication, and grant the board an extension of time to make decision on the case through January 31st, 2026.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And resolutions, we have three, the same people can vote on each, Berkowitz, Petty, Reddy and Grignani. We have application 2558, application 2520, and application 2544. Is there a motion?
Some more.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
And that is it?
That's it.
Application 25:58, Timothy Kelly, Three Nobles.
2550.
Oops, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Application 2550, Andre D'Alcara, 44A, Nakoma Avenue, Block 532, Lot 13, Zone R4, a C variance to legalize the shed contrary to Section 430-10C.
Mr. Balsar, is that you? Come on up. Okay, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, have a seat, make sure you use the microphone, be really close to the microphone, speak up, and state your name and spell your last name.
Shalhane Balsera, last name is B-A-L-S-A-R-A.
Okay, now I understand you're here because you put a shed in.
Yes.
And you didn't get a permit, and now you want the board to approve your shed, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, can you just explain to the board what you did, why you did it, and why you put the shed in that particular location?
Well, I have already attached a shed to the house, but I wanted to build a new one separate to the house, so right behind my, in my property, so that I can put some equipments for the snow or for the, for the summer, like a grass cutting or so, so that's why I wanted to build a new shed over there.
So you had a shed that was up against your house?
Yes, it is connected with the house.
Okay, and you removed that shed?
Not yet.
But that's still there?
It's still there.
But that's going to be removed?
Yes.
Okay, and you put the shed four and a half feet from the property line, and it's supposed to be six feet from the property line. Why does the shed have to be four and a half feet from the property line, or can you move the shed so it's six feet from the property?
I can't able to move it, but unfortunately, the base has already been built on it, and the shed is halfway done, so if it's possible, we can leave it over there, if not, then we can move a little bit to the wood inside.
So you're saying you could move it?
Well, the concrete base is, the concrete base is already put on it, and the shed is halfway made, so it's very hard to take it out, all the concrete base and stuff.
Why did you put it in that particular location instead of six feet from the property line?
I, I didn't know that it was about to six feet, I thought it was like four feet or so, that's why I put it 4.5.
Why did you think it was four feet, not six feet?
I'm not sure.
You just guessed? You didn't tell?
Yeah, and from the, from the back of the property line, it's almost like, from the back of the property line, it's almost eight feet.
Well, from the side it is.
From the side it's 4.5.
Yeah, but, so the question was, why did you put it 4.5 instead of six feet?
I didn't realize before.
You didn't know, you shouldn't do that, right?
So can you just make, is it on a footing, is it on, is it a slab or a footing?
It's a concrete base and on.
How big is the base?
I'm sorry?
Can't they just make the base bigger? If you make the base bigger, then you could slide the shed over, and then that's where you pick up your foot and a half.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Would you do that?
I think if you do that, you're going to have one less.
So you want me to.
We're going to have the concrete slab in the side. Is he still going to have a concrete slab in the side yard?
Okay, but that's not, that's probably not what anybody is objecting to. They're probably objecting to the fact that.
It's about the variance work.
Okay, but I don't think that we might or might not have an objector, but I think if you move it the foot and a half away from, and make it legit, that it's, it's kind of a technicality that you need it because it's foot and a half of a slab, or if it's not on it.
It has to be done.
It has to be done.
But the shed is halfway done on the slab.
It has to be moved.
Yeah.
Shed's going to have to be moved.
What?
Shed's going to have to be moved.
Were you building this shed at, at the property?
It's already built.
Are you building it, or is someone else building the shed?
Somebody has to contact the.
The contractor, okay.
But it's already built, right?
Halfway.
Can we hear the objections?
Yes.
So that we know what are the concerns. Oh, wait, before we do that, if he's willing to move, I think, Mr. Goskowitz, extend the slab, okay? Move it over a foot and a half, okay? You would be willing to do that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Then I think the objections go away.
Well, you don't know that, but we'll see.
We don't know that.
We will see.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience?
Okay, so you're okay moving the shed, leaving the slab, moving the shed, correct?
If there is no other choice, then I can do that, but if court is agree, then.
There's no hardship here, so the board can't really prove it, as it is. There's nothing shown that's a hardship, and that's what your requirement is, and I know it doesn't mean anything to you, but the fact that you didn't know doesn't make it right.
Okay.[1656.12]
Well, you had an odd shaped lot, and this is the only place that the shed could go, then that's something we would consider, but because you have room on your property, it's not a special case.
Does anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the testimony that this gentleman has given us? Please come forward. Give us your name and.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your names, spell your last name.
Ronald J. Hadley, Jr., H A D L E Y.
And you can have a seat, and just tell the board where you live.
I reside at forty-one Dakota Avenue. I'm not really here to complain about anything, because Mr. Valari, he kept the shed, I'm, our backyard's me.
Okay.
And the boundary of our backyards, he kept his shed way back. It's like he said, it's like eight feet. Um, I'm here more to make a request, and what the suggestion of the concrete slab with the shed to be moved? My request is, is, um, if you're familiar with Lake Shore and Minnehaha, it's, it's a hill.
So he's elevated a lot higher his backyard than our backyard, and we get their water all the time.
Being that it's on a slab, and there's gonna be no gutter system, heavy rains are gonna come off that shed roof, form a trough, and downstream it goes to us.
Does that occur?
It's been constant.
Well, if the head, if the shed is only half built, how much water are you getting if, when, and if it rains? The concrete is already there, okay.
When Mr. Valari first moved into the property, there was about twenty feet of bushes, brush, saplings, all, all vegetation type stuff that really helped with the water coming to us. He, we had a conversation, but he removed it anyway, and now it's gotten worse. Now, the shed is as far back as he could put it by the fence, but he's, like I said, he stayed well off the property line. The shed is completed on three quarters, which is six, three quarters. It has a shingled roof. And, um, when the rain hits that roof, you can imagine what it's going to do when it hits the ground without gutters, and it will make a trough, which will become a trench, which will become a stream, which will become a lake down by us. So my suggestion, I'm sorry if I'm going on, but my suggestion, if he has to move the shed, take a jackhammer and chop out that concrete slab that's going to be exposed now. And dig at least two to three feet on each side of that shed, down a foot and a half at least, fill it with stone, give that water somewhere to fall into, so.
So the, the, so you want to build the front rain, so that makes sense, there's a sense that, the problem is, he's not asking for a variance for impervious coverage. So I don't think we have the right to, that, that would kind of be, my guess is just neighbor to neighbor, because he's only asking for a.
Side, yes.
Side setback. So if it was impervious coverage, it's one thing, he's not asking for that.
And also, town engineer's report says that it's, uh...
Mm-hmm.
Does not necessitate his, uh, need for a.
Right, he's at, the, the, the engineer's saying he doesn't need to do anything.
Yeah, she's got over the maximum allowable impervious coverage.
So that, that would, I would say between the two of you, not here, but if he's, if he's agreeing to move it, that's one less, I mean, in theory, kind of one less variance he's gonna need.
Yeah.
It's the only, it means he has none.
It makes the most sense that instead of, see, I, I wish we could have had a discussion, because I could have helped you, but you just dig a pit, fill it with stone, and we put the shed on back.
You need to sit down with your neighbor and talk about that.
Excuse me?
Sit down.
With your neighbor and talk about that.
Yeah, I, well, it, it was done, you know, this.
Well, he'll have to, he's gonna be enlarging the, the concrete pad because he's moving the shed. He has agreed to do that.
Yeah.
And that before he does that, perhaps you can speak with him, neighbor to neighbor, and have a discussion as to what this gentleman is asking you to do, so that he does not get the water runoff onto his property.
That's, when, when I walked in, that's what I said, I'm not here to complain.
Okay.
I'm making a request.
Okay.
A man to man request.
We understand.
Help me out here.
That's between you and him, not here.
Right.
So if they're not gonna, if, is there a resolution? Is there anything we have to?
We're just.
We're not granting us a variant or, or all.
No, he agreed to move and he complains.
But he's gonna leave the concrete slab.
Yep.
Yeah.
I must see degrees with the neighbors.
You're, but he is enlarging the concrete slab because he is moving the shed.
But you don't know whether that's gonna trigger any variances.
Yeah.
You don't, we don't, we don't know that.
And the town engineer says there's no impervious coverage issue or drainage issue, so, now, just one last question, so your neighbor's asking, what if you put a little eaves trough on your shed roof?
I'm sorry?
If you put some eaves troughs on, so the water could run.
Yeah, we can talk and consider about that.
Okay, why don't you guys talk about that?
A gutter system?
Well, that, that's not what we're.
We're getting too deep into our involvement in your issue.
What's an eaves?
Pardon?
What, what, what is it? What'd you say, an eaves trough?
Yeah, a gutter.
A gutter, yeah, yeah.
To catch the water, so it doesn't just run straight off.
Yeah.
That's, that's not.
That, that would help too.
That's not what we're here to approve or disapprove of.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So great, great, you're gonna grant the variance subject to his moving the shed.
Okay.
Right.
You, you're gonna agree with that?
Yeah, so, uh, if I'm moving the concrete base like a feet and a half inside, whatever the one I, which I have, should I remain that one over there, or should I go, uh, get rid of that part?
If you could get rid of it, then there's no issue here.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you get, if you say you're getting rid of it, it's over.
Okay.
Then we're not even granting you a variance.
But if I cannot.
You have no variances needed. We don't wanna be here.
Is that what you wanna do?
Or you can leave it, and six feet you cannot.
So just make extend like maybe a, a feet and a half and just move a little bit inside.
Yes, which one are you gonna do?
But at the same time, can that?
He's either gonna tear up the foot and a half and just put, put in new footings, and everything doesn't have to slide, it's just gonna be over there, or he's going to extend it and slide, and leave the, leave the original foot and a half.
But if he leaves the original foot and a half, is it possible it's going to trigger? You know, coverage?
If, if you cut, if you take out the other foot and a half, it would just be a better thing. Put in new footings and move it, slide it over.
Okay.
All right?
Got it?
All right.
Agreed?
All right, and then you're gonna be talking to your neighbor.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, are we good with that?
How long do you need to do that work?
I have to find the contractor probably like at least, uh, couple of months.
Okay, do you, are you currently pending a, do you have a violation notice from the town?
Hmm, I have, only, only about this thing.
Right.
That's what we're here for.
Do you get a notice of violation from the zoning department?
Yeah.
Okay, but you, you have anything pending in municipal court?
No, nothing.
You just have a notice of violation?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so then you're going to tear up a foot and a half off the slab and rebuild the, the shed, correct?
No, re-slide the shed over.
Well.
Whatever it is, it's done.
You're gonna move the shed.
Yeah.
So it's a foot and a half.
So it's six feet off the side.
Okay, so what you're asking then is to withdraw this application because you're gonna correct the violation.
So you don't need any variances to correct that?
And just understand what you're agreeing to.
Because you're here because you've got a notice of violation, and they told you, in order to keep going with your project, you needed a variance, correct?
Correct.
Now you're gonna correct the problem.
So you don't need a variance.
Correct the violation, so you don't need a variance anymore. So you're gonna withdraw your application with the understanding that you're gonna correct the, the zoning violation.
You look confused. You look, you have a question? What, what's?
No, I was just thinking something, but yeah.
Do you wanna come back after you think about it some more, or you wanna get it done today?
No, I, I would get it done today.
Okay. Do you understand?
Yeah. Um, yeah, I'll go with, uh... I'll go with the foot and a half inside.
Okay, so you're gonna withdraw your application for a variance.
Yes.
With the understanding that you're gonna correct the violation that you received from the zoning department.
Correct?
And we don't have to do anything?
Okay, so you're asking the board to withdraw the, okay, so the board's gonna. Well, you, you've already got.
Let me see what you asked me.
Yeah, that'll, that'll trigger the zoning department, so the zoning department is now gonna move forward with your violation, so you might wanna talk to the zoning department and let them know that you're gonna fix it.
But the compliance is outstanding?
Well, he's got a violation notice, right? You have a violation notice?
Yeah.
But if he moves the thing, the violation goes away, so we won't have one.
Good, we're done.
Right.
Do you understand, sir, what we're asking you to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, you understand what you gotta do.
Yes.
You sure?
Yes.
You have any questions?
Okay.
Okay, so you're asking the board to, you're asking that, that your application for the variance be withdrawn, is that correct?
Yes.
Because you're going to fix what your violation is in regard to.
Yes.
So do we vote on that?
No.
No, you don't have to.
We don't have to do anything.
Okay, wonderful.
Well.
Have a good night.
Yes, just talk to your neighbor so that you could be neighborly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was quick.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Application twenty-five ten, Lee Dong, fifty James Street.
Guys, take it outside, please.
Lot three, zone R three, a C variance to construct a two-story addition, left side, two-story addition, right side.
Back right back.
Covered front porch, second story, open deck with stairs, a landing and stairs over patio, all under proposed second story deck contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, columns four and ten. Mr. Lee Dong?
Yes.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give?
Yes, sir.
Should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Right, yes, sir.
Okay, you can have a seat. State your name and spell your last name, please.
My name is Lee Dong, D U N G.
Okay, I understand that you, are you the only one here on this application tonight?
Yes, I am.
You have your.
Yeah, because everybody busy.
You have your architect or engineer or anything with you tonight?
No, I am by myself.
Okay, um, there's a letter from the municipal engineer dated May twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-five. Have you seen that?
Please, thank you, sir.
We have that in our package?
Yes.
Yeah.
I got it.
List it. Have you seen, you can keep that. Have you seen that before?
Uh, I got it in here, but I don't know somewhere. I can take a look at that.
Okay. Do you have, um, do you have an architect on this project?
Yes, sir.
Do you have an engineer on this project?
Yes.
Okay, have you, and neither one of them are here tonight, correct?
Yeah, only me.
Only you? Okay, you might want to take that letter from the municipal engineer and talk to your architect and engineer about the concerns that were raised in that letter.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then have them, um, maybe do some plans that address those concerns, okay?
Yes.
You understand what he's saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So.
So today I am here, it's not the final for the approval for the, the permit?
Correct.
That's my question?
Yes.
Well, you also, when you come back, you, you might wanna bring your architect or your engineer with you to testify about what it is that you wanna do.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to talk to the architect.
Yep, and the town engineer, because if we approve this application, you have to comply with what the township engineer is saying here, and it might be something you don't wanna do, okay?
Yes, sir.
So make sure, okay?
Yeah, this is my first time, I'll be loving it.
Okay, good, okay, so you wanna come back a different night?
Uh, so what night? Do I have to come back again?
Yes, for sure.
Yes. Nora, may we have the case of our application, February eleventh, twenty-twenty-six. February the eleventh, two thousand twenty-six, at seven thirty in the evening, and it is advisable for you to have your architect here and to comply with the engineer's report.
I came to my architect yesterday, he very busy, I pretty sad, I have to show up by myself.
Right, but so, so just, you understand what they're telling you?
Call him up and tell him the date.
Tell the architect the date.
February eleventh.
And get a meeting with the engineering.
Yes, sir.
So that you come up with a plan that the next time you come here, and we ask you questions, that you have, might have the expert here to answer them, and that you've made an agreement with the town engineer how to resolve the issues that he's presenting.
Okay.
All right?
I'm doing it, I'll be loving it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we come, do we get the date?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And he granted us what I'm?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, he is, we agree, it sounds like it, yes.
Okay, you need a book.
May we have, we have a motion, please?
February eleventh.
Second.
February eleventh.
Oh, my goodness, it's like forever.
Better than never.
Okay, thank you, sir, bye-bye.
Bye-bye, thank you. Application twenty-two col.
He looked happy.
What, what happy? Application twenty-two colon forty-five, one ninety-nine New Road LLC and two nineteen New Road LLC, one ninety-nine dash two nineteen New Road, block seven seventy, lots four and five, zone L one W dash two, preliminary and final, final site plan with CD variance to construct two warehouses. This application was carried from July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
Well, it was carried at that time?
All right, you wanna put, everybody ready? You wanna put your.
This one got carried, so hold on.
Good evening, men, this is the word. My name is Michael Ruben. I represent an order of an applicant, got it, go, one ninety-nine New Road LLC, and two nineteen New Road LLC, block seven seven zero, lot four and five. Is in the LIW two district, and is currently approved with non-conforming use of a system of two residential dwellings and an open storage yard. Applicant proposes to model all improvements and construct two contractor storage buildings. The lot is operated by Neto Construction Company, which uses the outdoor storage yard to store its vehicles. Neto Construction will, will continue to use the new property by, by using the rear building and the parking in the rear of the lot. The front building will be leased out to various independent contractors.
That building, I believe, is five thousand square feet?
The one in the rear.
The one in the rear is one.
The one in the rear.
The one in the rear is five thousand square feet.
You have a, you have, uh, you have a company at the present time that will occupy that site?
The front building, the rear building, it will be occupied by Neto Construction.
Okay.
Who currently is the affiliated entity to the current owners, and, and uses the current site to store of their vehicles.
Okay.
They're gonna, Neto wants to testify, they're gonna ship a whole bunch of those out of Parsippany and just keep a few of them, um, on this particular property. Uh, there'll be forty-eight onsite parking spaces. Um, applicant seeks preliminary and final site plan approval, D one use variance, a C variance for parking in the front yard within fifteen feet of the front lot line. There are other possible variances that have been identified by the board's professionals, which will be addressed by the applicant's witnesses. Those witnesses are J. Michael Petry, professional engineer, a professional planner, who will testify in both capacities, and we're gonna ask for the board to indulge this, destroy this testimony of having the engineering first and planning last. Uh, Douglas Coleman, uh, the applicant's architect, and Lee Klein, the applicant's traffic engineer. Unless there are any questions from the board, we're prepared to proceed with our witnesses.
Please.
Uh, Michael Petry is the first witness.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your names, spell your last name, please.
J. Michael Petry, P E T R Y. The firm is Petry Engineering, one fifty-five Besake Avenue, Suite three fifty, in Fairfield, New Jersey.
Michael, do you think the board's gonna consider you an educational professional background?
Certainly, I'm a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology with a bachelor's degree in architecture. Uh, I've been involved in site design and infrastructure improvement projects for the past forty-one years, he says that quietly. I am licensed as an engineer, architect, and planner in the state of New Jersey. All three of my licenses are in good standing, and I've been licensed in all three disciplines for more than thirty years. I've appeared before planning and zoning boards on numerous occasions, including this municipality's boards, um, and I have been held as an expert in site design in federal court.
And you've appeared as a planner and an engineer before a variety of boards around the state.
Yes, I have, and I've served boards in both capacities.
Please qualify.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, will you, uh, is it okay with the board if we split this testimony, start with engineering and planning last?
I, I have no problem with that.
All right, uh, let's start with the engineering. You were, you were retained to do an engineering and design plan for this particular project?
Yes, actually, our, our firm was engaged to prepare a boundary and topographic survey, a wetlands delineation and LOI, conceptual site plans, a series of soil investigations, a preliminary site plan, which was submitted to this board simultaneously with its submission to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, where we were seeking both flood hazard area and wetland GPs and transitionary averaging permits. Uh, we were also engaged to secure Morris County Soil Conservation Approval, to prepare a planning evaluation, to attend meetings and hearings, and prepare a final site plan with resolution compliance. Our firm prepared the survey work, performed the delineation, received a LOI from NJDEP, and we recently filed for an extension on that LOI because they are good for five years, and that five-year period has, uh, expired. We developed the soil testing, prepared the site plan. We developed the soil testing, prepared the site plans, and secured approvals for the site plan from NJDEP for both wetlands and flood hazard area permits. So we're for this board for site plan approval, use variances to construct, uh, to reconstruct an existing contractor's yard and to include new buildings that will take what is currently outside storage and have the vast majority of those materials placed inside of the buildings. I have a series of, um, presentation boards that I'm going to utilize. I made 11 by 17 copies for the board members to make your lives easier, uh, and, and to make the board secretary's life easier so she doesn't have to keep 24 by 36 copies in her file.
So these were not submitted with the application, right?
They were not submitted with the application, but they represent information all of which is contained on the document.
Okay, great. Can we just mark that A1 then?
That is, appreciate that.
How many pages is this?
It goes through one. Well, it's SP through seven.
F1?
14, so A1 is a 14-page document.
I may or may not call for all of them.
Sure.
But I think it's easier for the board to have it at 11 by 17 than to have 14 by 36.
Appreciate that.
I can, I can do this, if that's what, if that's what everybody needs.
He needs to walk into the microphone. Yeah, that's fine. As long as you, as long as you, you know, you use the microphone, that's fine.
Okay. Um, the subject property has two lot designations, lot four and lot five. Both of them are in block 770. It's commonly known as 219 and 199 New Road. So what's on the, what's on the easel right now, the first sheet in this set, is a figure that shows the aerial photograph of the area with your zoning, um, superimposed over it. So at the top of the sheet is Route 46. Um, somewhere to the left bottom of the sheet is Interstate Route 80, and New Road connects between the two in a circular manner, going from top center to bottom left corner. Um, the subject property is designated PQ right here, and that is roughly halfway, it's a little less than halfway, but roughly halfway between Route 46, uh, uh, and, and Route 280 to the south and west. Um, the subject property, in fact, we, we did take the opportunity to blow it up a little bit. We may come back to this, uh, in the future, but as, as is described by, uh, council and the open statements, the, the subject property has two residential structures located on it. There's outdoor storage of material accessed from a single driveway off of New Road. The rear portion of this property, what we'll talk about later, is, is wetlands. It is also flood plain. The rear boundary line of the property is the Rockaway River. So when we look at the boundary and topographic survey that was prepared for the property, also in your set, and a little color to make it easier to see from, from where you are. The, uh, the property is generally rectangular in shape. Uh, it has, uh, 300, a little over 353 feet of frontage along New Road. It's almost 900 feet deep, uh, in fact, 900 on the top, 875 on the bottom. It contains a total of 7.3 acres, and the back half of the property, and it's delineated on all of our plans, uh, shows the wetlands limitation, which runs along where my finger just ran. Uh, it also actually comes in and takes a little piece of the front of the property as well. That wetlands was determined to have a 50-foot transition area, another protected area, and that 50-foot transition area runs along this line here, uh, also shown on each of the sets of plans that's in your set. So DEP's gone out, they've verified that line, they've, they've established that transition. What else do we have to deal with here? Well, we also have to deal with the, the Rockaway River and the flood hazard elevation that's associated with the Rockaway River. And that flood elevation ranges, because the river has pitched to it, from 175 to 175.7. So that generally follows the limits of the wetlands or the wetland transition areas.
Um- Explain that to me a little bit more.
Sure. The-
So the river's way over here on the far right?
River's way over here.
Got it.
Okay. And it floods all of this property, all the way up to about here.
That floods all the time?
Um, well, that's the, that's what DEP refers to as the, uh, flood hazard area designed flood elevation.
So the numbers you gave, 1.7, 1.1, what does that mean to me?
That's, that's an elevation above sea level in, in 1988 datum that the, that the, when the Rockaway River floods to its extreme, beyond what's considered the 1% flood or the 100-year flood, as you've probably heard it described in the past, um, the DEP adds 20% more volume on that. And that establishes an elevation. Everything below that elevation, DEP regulates. So if you want to put a shovel full of dirt, or a building, or anything in that, below that flood elevation, you have to go to DEP first and get a permit to do that.
So you've done that.
And we've done that.
Okay, got it.
And, and it's an important fact because this is an environmentally sensitive piece of property. And, and what we've, what we've done ahead of coming to the board is go to DEP to make sure we got their blessing.
And you have a lot of blessings.
Yeah, we, we did, we did get their blessing. Um, so our initial application to DEP was for the wetlands delineation and LOI. Uh, it took a little over a year to get them to, to issue that. That was approved in December, on December 18th, 2019. We filed for an extension of that LOI on October 18th, 2024, a year ago. We still haven't heard back. Um, but it, it would be extended based upon the original permit to December 18th, 2029. DEP, the wetlands people have no restriction as to when they can issue their, their extensions.
Nor do they come back and do another visit?
They, they can come back to do another visit, yes, to see, usually to see if there's any violations. Generally, extensions are, are pretty much a guarantee. Now, we have permits in hand, and, and that's where I was going to get to next. The permits allow us to, to do the work, but we have to have a current LOI. They, they, they can't change the permit because the LOI changes. All we need is a current LOI before we can put a shovel in the ground.
Do you have any nervousness as to whether they're going to apply the new rules to your extension?
The extension is only for a letter of interpretation. It's not for the permits. The permits are the permits, and that's what I was going to get to. The permits were submitted to NJDEP, and they were issued, actually, they were submitted in June of 2022, and after several modifications, they issued the joint permit for wetlands and flood hazard area in March 22nd of 2023. Those permits extend until March 21st, 2028. So we have the right to build our project until March 21st, 2028.
The project you're giving us right now, they've looked at, and they've given you the permits to build that project within those limitations?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
But he said he can't get started till he gets a LOI?
Right.
Extension?
Yes, that, that's not a problem because we have to come get this board's permission first. So we're here, we're here while DEP is working on the LOI extension. Um, the, the, the one that we submitted in Wayne took them 16 months, 16 months to respond to.
So how far, how far are you into it now?
We're, uh, 13 months. Maybe we only have three to go. I don't know. DEP doesn't have time restrictions. Those went away, believe it or not, with COVID, and they have not come back. DEP used to have time limits. They don't have time limits anymore for wetlands projects, only for flood hazard area projects. So, so we have this property. The vast majority of the, the rear portion of the property is wooded wetland. The front portion of the property is, is utilized as an outdoor contractor's storage yard. Um, and, and there are two residential structures on the property as well. Those wetlands, as I said, wiggle around to the front and take a piece of that as well. So what we're-
That property is totally, your project is totally surrounded by wetlands.
Except for New Road, yep.
Yeah. And the residential are, what? Are they two homes or?
There's, there's a home there, and one of the homes, I think, has residential uses and an office use in it that supports the contractor's yard. Yes, they're residential. There are people who live there.
Okay.
So this is the layout sheet containing your set. Again, this, this sheet has been colored for purposes of clarity and presentation. The applicant is before this board to seek approval to remove the two residential structures, item number one, to construct two new warehouse structures. One in the front containing 18,100 square feet with rough dimensions of 180 by 100, and a second in the rear, which is 100 feet by 50 feet. Now, that building in the rear is going to be occupied by Neto Construction. Again, what is anticipated is that Neto Construction will have their equipment stored in this building, and they're going to have their mechanic in this building as well, doing work on their vehicles only. I think it's important to mention that. This is not an outside use. This is a support for the, for the contractor's yard.
What are these vehicles?
Excuse me?
What are the vehicles that will be stored?
Well, the, um, the- Neto Construction is a concrete contractor, and they do site improvements as well. So they have, they have lowboys with backhoes. They have, um, they have containers for, for ref use. They have, um, tandem trucks. They, they have trucks. In fact, most of those trucks are on the site today. Um, and, and they have the, the ability to move those on and off the property on a regular basis, as they do today. So the goal of this project is to take the majority of the stored materials and get them inside of buildings. So it's, the ultimate goal here is to clean up the site.
So this is all outside stuff now? The materials?
Yes. If you, in fact, if you, I'll go back for a hot second. The second area. Um, this area will happen to be from, uh, New Jersey Gin Warehouse, 2015. But you can see the materials, and this is the, the second sheet in the, the presentation that was handed out. So you can see the materials in the back portion of this lot includes-
It's a mess.
Includes trucks, includes containers, it, yes, it, but you know what? It's, it's a reasonably screened mess right now, but it is a mess. When I say it's a reasonably screened mess, there's-
I agree.
There are evergreens across the front, and there are the, the homes that, that make it better. Our, our goal here is to, is to put it inside buildings. And the buildings, um, the buildings provide any screening that's, that's really necessary. Go ahead.
There's a lot here, so I just want to make sure I'm getting everything. The D variance is, did you describe what variances you need yet?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
He's just describing what our project construction poses.
Okay.
What the project construction, why they need the variances, what that stuff.
Okay, instead of the variances, what you need first, we're gonna get?
This is what we're building, and this is what variance are implicated by what we are building.
Okay.
If you do that, you need these following variances. We have got them.
That's correct.
Okay. So around these buildings, we're gonna, we're gonna create a paved parking lot. That parking lot's gonna be paved. It's going to be curved. It's going to have stormwater collection systems associated with it. The, uh, the stormwater collection systems will have a, uh, detention and water quality basin associated with them before those discharged to the wetlands. So we're going to be, not to, not to give away all of my purposes of planning, but we are going to be improving the quality of stormwater runoff that discharges to the wetlands today. We're going to be re-vegetating, um, existing transition areas that are currently utilized for, um, construction vehicle and material storage today. Um, we're going to be, uh, providing a subsurface system where the roof leaders from the buildings go so they can recharge into the ground. So we're creating a recharge situation again today. And, and what we're trying to do is take a site that is, that is utilized for generally the same purpose today and make it something that not only the applicant, but the municipality can be proud of. So a small portion, a small portion of this rear parking lot, um, is anticipated to be utilized for the outdoor overnight parking of equipment. That is only, will only happen in the rear and will only include Neto-owned vehicles.
Is your client willing to make that a condition of approval?
Yes.
How about with respect to only working on Neto vehicles in that rear? Is that okay too?
That the rear building and rear parking lot will be used for Neto vehicles?
What is the blue area? I can't read.
The blue area is a, is a retention and detention basin on the property. So part of what NJDEP makes you do when you, when you expand paved areas is to provide for a water quality element. So this basin has a sand-based bottom, and the, the water quality storm, the lesser storms, uh, when, when it, you get a splattering of rain and it washes all of the, the materials off of the pavement into a basin, DEP wants you to, to allow that to sit in the basin and get all the deleterious materials out of it before it discharges to the wetlands. And that's what this basin does.
Discharge the wetlands?
It does discharge to the wetlands. Ultimately, the, the basin could, has the capacity to take stormwater from the, from the paved surfaces and hold it back, has an outlet structure, so it discharges that, that same water slowly to that, to the wetlands. That was a permit. That was one of the things we had to get before we could come to this board. Now, what DEP does when you seek those types of permits is DEP makes you set up what's called a conservation area. So they basically restrict any further use of that property going forward. And they say, and then put up a split rail fence, so everybody knows where it is. And on that fence, you're gonna put signs that says, you know, conservation area, stay out. And so that's why the rear portion of this property has a fence that kind of wraps around all of that, uh, that detention basin area and back into the, into the sides of the, of the parking lot. So beyond that is, is limited.
So you have two structures proposed. It's gonna be 23,000 square feet total.
That is to, correct. 23,100 square feet.
To be precise, very good.
To be precise.
And, and that would require obviously a whole lot of impervious coverage, right?
We, we do have, we do have a fair amount of impervious coverage, yes. But I'll, I'll get to that-
Later?
In a little bit.
Okay.
Promise.
Go away.
It, it's part, it's part of my, part of my planning discussion. I can, I can jump to it if you'd like, but I, I, what I prefer to do is, is-
Did you give us dates on those various maps that you flipped over?
Yes, these are, these are revised through 4/6/24. That's the detailed layout that we build in front of the site.
4/6?
4/8, I believe.
I think so, too.
Yes, 4/8, I'm sorry.
Spins a lot.
You know, when you-
True days are important.
When, 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 when you start to get on, all the eyes are the first thing to go, I think. This is, this is actually, this is actually a, a good, a good map to talk to, at least briefly. So this is our grading drainage and stormwater management. So I talked, I spoke before, um, about that elevation, that flood elevation. And, and that's what this blue line represents. It kind of cuts through here. This is that flood elevation that, that DEP regulates. So everything to this side of that line, DEP regulates. Everything to that side of the line, they don't regulate. So when we developed our plans, we tried to keep as much as we could outside of that and put as little as we had to inside of that.
So that 5,000- So, that 5,000 square foot is, is within it?
It is within it. And so, when you're finished, what DEP makes you do, because you're allowed to, you're allowed to put two shovel pulls in over here as long as you take two shovel pulls out over there, okay?
So, it's a net even?
It's a net even. And that's what this red line represents. This red line that's dashed here is, represents the post-construction 100-year, or the, I'm sorry, the flood hazard area, flood elevation. So, we balance that by cut and fill so that we have the same amount of storage after we're finished as we did before we started. But, what we did that we don't have today is we put in water quality, we put in detention, and we put in recharge, all things that don't exist today.
And this is all regulated and inspected by the DEP?
It's all regulated by DEP. DEP, I think I gave you the dates, but DEP took about 15 months to review the flood hazard elevation information.
But when you're building the project, the towns aren't doing that, DEP comes and judges.
DEP doesn't. We have to notify DEP before we put a shovel in the ground and say, "We're starting this," and they have the right to come out and inspect at any time.
Okay.
And when we're finished, we have to say, "Hey, we're finished."
Okay.
So, yes, they're, they have a responsibility. Now, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, because DEP, about, Tom, 15 months ago, they, they required every municipality to assign a floodplain manager. And the floodplain manager's job is to make sure that you're following the DEP rules, and if the, if you're not, you're supposed to, you're supposed to report it to DEP. I don't know who the floodplain manager in Parsippany is, but I'm gonna guess it's your town engineer or your assistant town engineer, both of whom are good guys. So, ultimately, they, they have a level of responsibility, but the ultimate responsibility lies with DEP.
Okay.
DEP is just trying to spread the blame so that they're not liable for everything or responsible. We're also, as part of the improvements, we're putting in a state-of-the-art lighting system, all LED lights. Those LED lights are made up of a series of five light poles, two in the front, three in the back, um, four in the back, sorry. So, there's, there's a total of six light poles, those mounting heights are 25 feet, these are all LED lights. And then, the balance of the light fixtures are building-mounted fixtures, and there are 12 of them, and they're mounted 18 feet above the grade. There's minimal spillage onto New Road from the lights in the front, there's minimal spillage onto the adjacent parking lot that abuts this property.
Need to find minimal?
Um, we're looking at like 2 to 3 tenths of a foot candle spillage over into the street or into the adjacent parking lot.
So, there would be no impact to any of the residential areas across the other side of New Road?
Well, if you go back to the, if you go back to the beginning of this whole thing, what I see is, we don't have residential areas within 200 feet of us.
Okay, good.
So, so yes.
We, we can, I think we have the only two residential buildings within that general area.
So, yes.
You're tearing them down.
Yes, we're tearing them down. And then, finally, as it relates to engineering, there is also a landscape plan. And while the landscape plan is obviously subject to your municipal foresters' review, there, there was comments by DEP for the reforestation of the transition areas. So, when I talk about transition areas, the wetlands have, have a 50-foot, used to be called a buffer, 50-foot buffer, and that buffer is established and protected so that it, so that it helps clean the water before it gets to the wetlands. And when you've got transition area that's disturbed, when you go to DEP, they make you restore it. So, we have a whole bunch of planting material in here and in here, in the back of the property beyond what we're, what we're building, where we have to restore, um, we have to restore plantings with DEP-approved plant materials. And they require us to maintain them for a period of time and report on them for a period of time. So, all of that, all of the landscaping in the rear, and I guess to the, to the south of the property in the front, is all material that DEP required and approved as part of our, as part of our planting plan. So, um, the municipality can comment on anything they want. Back in here, back in here, that's DEP's regime. So, that's, that's where we stand. So, I think that gives you a good idea of the, of the, um, of the engineering. I'm going to come back to talk about variances later, but since people asked about what, what they were, let me start with. We, we propose these warehouse buildings for a reason, because our intention is that the contractors will be storing their material inside of these buildings. Not really functioning inside of them, they're not really, um, they're not really there all day long. But if, if the, if a landscape contractor pulls his trailer in at the end of the day, he's gonna pull it out the next day, he's got somewhere to keep his equipment and keep it safe and inside of the building. So, we realize that we have a, at least a D2 variance to expand an existing contractor's yard to include multiple contractors. It's been suggested that we need a variance for multiple uses. I think we have multiple tenants, I'm not sure that we have multiple uses. I think the use of the repair of the Netto vehicles is ancillary to the principal use, but we, we're not, we're not here to argue, what we're here to do is we're gonna prove our variances.
Because it's really not a business, it's a function for the business.
Correct.
Okay.
But it's not just Netto's business?
Correct, there's multiple, that's why I think we need, I think we need a D2 variance to expand a non-conforming use, which is the, uh, which is the contractor's yard, because we're going to have multiple contractors.
Well, is he gonna be fixing other people's equipment? Is that what you're asking?
Nope, it was just a stipulation made on the record that he would only repair his own equipment, his own equipment only.
What about the tenants in the other building?
No, no. He will not repair their equipment.
No, but they'll maybe repair-
They're repairing their own equipment?
Um, I think, I think they would do the basic things that, that contractors do. I mean, if, if they have to, you know, change the oil, they may change the oil. But they're, if they're gonna, if they're going to do those types of things in their space, then I, I would anticipate that that's ancillary to their use of their equipment, yes.
You have to deal, get rid of the old oil, I guess.
That's, and, and there's state regulations to deal with that, yes.
What control will the owner have on the scope of uses? Do you allow a guy who's, uh, a blasting contractor, would he be allowed to locate in that building?
I think, I think the anticipation-
Assume he's gonna have dynamite installed.
I, I would, I would think that the owner would be restrictive of something like that, but the answer is he expects general-
When you sit down, maybe you can frame out what you will not allow.
Okay.
Because I've been asking that question for about a year.
Okay. The other variances that we know we need is that we are asking for the parking, the front parking to be set back 12 feet from the right-of-way where 15 feet is required. And we have-
Why do you need that?
Why do we need that? We're, we're restricted in the back, so we've had to kind of push everything forward. We've tried to minimize it, um, 12 feet versus 15.
Can't find 3 feet, just move that back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, a whole building, come on, you got plenty of room there.
Well, the-
I can see you squeezing the corner on the side of that building, but this is difficult variance to prove.
All right, well, we haven't gotten to proofs yet, I just wanted to list them so that everybody was aware. It's also, I think the GPI letter also suggests that a parking variance would be, could be needed. I know that there's gonna be testimony from the traffic engineer about how he established the standard for parking, but I think the GPI letter suggests we need 94 spaces, we show a need of 42. So, there's a pretty substantial differential there. I think we need to hear from the traffic engineer before we get into that, we have 48 on site.
Is there a succinct, uh, synopsis of the variances needed, or is there all in, mixed in the letters?
Well, that's what I tried to just do as I spoke, I tried to give a-
Okay, so nothing on, nothing in writing?
Um, I think they're listed in-
Like, when we get the residential, it's-
The residential is-
It's much easier, but it's like bump, 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 there's nothing like that within this package, correct?
I, I think there's, because there is in the, in Mr. Chadwick's letter, there's, there's a listing of what he feels the variances are.
22, 22, 22, letter from Mr. Chadwick.
August 9th?
Yeah.
Okay.
22.
22?
22, yes. We've been at this for a little while.
Well, you know you need the front yard parking there.
Setback, yes, we agree.
Right?
We agree we need a D2 variance, whether we need two D variances for, for multiple users is, is another question. The number of parking spaces-
I think you also need D1, but the D2 and D1 test, what you're saying.
And, and finally, I think Mr. Chadwick cited us for front yard loading. I, I think when the architect explains the buildings, what we're gonna see is that we're not loading in the front yard. What we're providing in this building is we're providing the ability to drive into the building with equipment. And so, we're not gonna be loading, we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be pulling trucks up, loading materials into them, and, and pulling them out. What we're doing is we're, we're giving the, each tenant the ability to bring their car to the site, park it, pull out their equipment, pull it into the driveway, it's in front of their door, and, and go to work for the day, and then do the opposite when they come back at the end of the day.
Is the current use permissible in the zone?
It is not. Contractor's storage yard is, I think, permissible pretty much anywhere.
Right.
So-
But a warehouse is permissible?
A warehouse is a permitted use, yes. And, and-
But this is not a warehouse.
No, it's not really a warehouse.
I-
It's kind of like a flex space.
Try again, this is a indoor setup.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's, it's a space for, I mean, yes, flex space to an extent. Could there be an ancillary space for a desk where you're doing your paperwork and sending out your bills? Perhaps, yes. But, but this space is really for the storage of vehicles and equipment associated with construction, construction work.
Okay, so that's the use that you're asking the board to approve?
That is correct.
In both, both buildings?
Yes, that is correct.
So, then, if someone wants to rent space and their use is not consistent with that approval, they'll need to come for a variance?
That is correct. Unless their use, I guess, is permitted in the zone.
Right, unless it's permitted, sure.
Okay, so those are the variances we believe that we're going to come back and talk to after both the architect and the traffic engineer provide their testimony to the board.
Do we wanna, you wanna address any minor comments, item, light poles, that kind of thing, or do you wanna wait?
You can ask questions, do anything you want.
You got them up to 25 feet, most of them in that area around 20. Any reason you can't drop them down 50?
We, we could certainly drop them down, um, we, we may need to add one or two, but we could certainly drop them down.
You plan to keep them on all night? Because we generally shut them off, shut them off at the end of business.
Security level.
Yeah. You okay with that?
Let me turn down the security level.
Okay. And the landscaping along the front, it's got some nice evergreen trees there now, you're gonna cut them all down?
We, we are removing most of the evergreen trees that are there, yes.
You're gonna put any back in?
We do have, we do have plans to put deciduous trees back in and a hedge row back in. I saw your comment that you wanted the hedge row tightened up a little bit. I think there was also comments from, um, the, the forester, the foresters' department that they wanted a different type of evergreen screening to shield our, our parking lot from the parking lot next door.
If you're able to put an enhanced landscaping along the road-
Yes.
-to break up the front of the building?
Yes.
And we'll leave the details to the forest.
That's fine.
Mr. Lemanowitz, do you have questions of this witness?
Yes, Mr. Petrie, you're just going back to the lighting in the front of the building. I noticed that the, that the lighting pattern is a, a wide pattern, and that, and that it's supplemented, the pole lighting is a wide pattern.
Yes.
And supplemented by wall-mounted lights on the front of the building that are what we used to call wall packs, and they're pointed, you know, where you can, where the, where the, the light source seems to be visible, pointing out to New Road. Is there any reason why you couldn't, instead of having a, having that wide lensing, have more of a forward throw lensing, so we don't have the wall-mounted lights pointing into New Road?
On the front of the building?
Yes.
Yes, we can accomplish that. It's, it's a pretty far throw.
Yeah, like I said, I wasn't sure, or at least you could make, you could make it far enough that maybe the lights on the building can be a definite down-pointed light rather than a horizontal-pointed light. So, if you can reach a little bit more from the New Road side of the parking lot, and extend that reach a little bit, and you can change the fixtures on the building so they're directly down, and you don't have the light source point to that New Road.
We, we can, I'm certain that we can accomplish that, yes.
Are there any other questions from the board of this witness, of his testimony? Is there anyone in the audience?
Was that, I'm sorry. You got all your head? Tom?
Well, based, there's, there's quite a few comments in here. Are there any comments in my letter that you're gonna have issue with?
I have no issue with your letter, Mr. Lemanowitz. It was thorough and detailed, and it was easy for me to understand, and we could accept that as a condition of any action that the board takes.
And the only thing that, since, since this report was written, the township engineers requested me to request on your, on the stormwater maintenance manual-
Yes.
-on the sheet that lists the responsible party. The responsible party has to sign that, to know that there's a responsible party.
That, that won't be a problem, since the responsible party is sitting behind me to my left.
Yeah, funny.
Madam Chair, that's all I have right now.
David is a very responsible guy. I don't know about my client, but David is.
Madam Chair, that's really all, you know, with the, with the representation that there's nothing other, nothing else in here that is, that Mr. Petrie takes exception to, I think I can, I can say that, I don't have any more questions for this witness.
Where do we stand on the number of parking spaces? You said there were different formulas.
I think, I think that the traffic engineer is gonna have some discussion about that, and I think one of the questions in the reports was, you know, where, where does the standard come from? And I think he's gonna be able to speak to that. So, I think, I, that's why I'd rather let you hear his testimony before I talk about parking variances and, and where we are.
I do have a question though. On occasion, New Road floods.
Yes, it does.
Does this property do so at the same time?
Um, the, the rear of this property does, yes. New Road- New Road, New Road is, is a fun road, it actually has a brook that crosses it as you get a little bit down closer to 46 from this property. But it's, it's a classic, it's a classic, what I call a flat road. It's got like a little W shape to it, it goes up and down, and up and down, and up and down, and all of the downs flood. And I know, because I drove it for the 14, 13 or 14 years where I lived in Parsippany to get to my office in West Orange, so I, which is where it was at the time, so I'm, uh-
Now, so what happens to the front of the property when the road is flooded?
Well, the, the front of this property isn't bad, but the front edge of New Road is. I mean, it basically, it goes, it goes up and down. So, what's the good part about what we're doing here? Contractor's equipment sits up higher and can go through the water. So, why is this an appropriate location for this particular use, which is gonna be one of the standards you hear about later, is, is that a contractor's vehicle can traverse the road when it's flooded, unlike a passenger vehicle in an office, which can't because, because they, their, their vehicles sit lower to the road.
Now, the, the larger building, is that gonna be, is that a one-story?
They're all single-story buildings, yes. The, both, both buildings are single-story, and, and the, we, I can't tell you exactly how many, look, this is set up, I think, for 13 or 14 different users. Look, this is set up, I think, for 13 or 14 different users. The applicant doesn't expect that many and would obviously rather have less. But, you know, he's setting it up because he understands there's a need. People come to him and say, is there, is there a way I can rent space?
Are there going to be units with walls between them? Or is it going to be like a bar?
The architect's going to speak for that. So I don't want to steal everybody else's thunder.
You're doing so well so far.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else have any questions of this witness and his testimony? I see. Anyone in the audience have any questions of this witness and his testimony? I see.
Next witness is Douglas Coleman, Vice Architect.
Is your client going to merge the lots?
Yeah. Yes. Go to our reporter. One 99, New Road LLC, two 19, New Road LLC, owned by entities related to natural construction. So it's all one, pretty great unified version.
Gotcha. Yep, okay, can you raise your hand please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth? The whole truth?
I do.
Great, state your name, spell your last name, please.
Douglas Coleman, C O L E M A N, 266 Congruent Road, Warren, New Jersey.
Now, could you give the board benefit of your education, your special background?
Sure, I've been an expert architect for over 40 years. I have a list here of about 55 towns. It appeared several times in front of me. As fast as architect, familiar activities, licensed, six, seven other states.
And they're current?
Yes, they are.
And you've worked for boards in the past?
Yes, I have.
Thank you, I ask that you recognize the licensed architect, eight years.
He's qualified.
Can we describe the building that you have designed to fit on the site plan that Mr. Petrie previously described?
Sure. What I've put before you in the rendering is, to be clear, is a rendering from the rear. The reason we did that was we wanted to be able to show you the building in the back, 40, the 5,000 square foot building, that you would not see if we did the rendering for the truck. The larger building, 8,100 square foot building is identical, so front to back. The only difference is if you look closely, you'll see that there's unit numbers placed on those. So the unit number starting at the front and goes one through five or six and then finishes up on the back.
But that's A2, today's date? Because I don't think that's in our package, right?
Yes.
No, I just give you a copy. Do you want A2? Yes, please.
Now, the numbers of units that you're describing, they may correspond to numbers that they do on the front sign.
That is correct.
Can you test my, the most valuable units as well?
Is the rendering the intended color scheme for the
Yes.
project?
Yes. I know, John, you would ask for colors. We gave you the rendering to give you an idea that it was going to be earth tone colors. But the drawing you have before you, A1, the boards that I have are the same drawings you have before you. I'll just walk you through them. One of the things we did here is soften the rendering. The building is located from the front of the building as well as from the rear of the building. There are garage doors that'll open up. We tried to give the client options of what they could do. The units are about 1,300 square feet each. We have the ability in which to be able to combine those units. And as you asked before, the board member, there's actually demising walls that we put between the units. So you have demising walls for security. We provided a bathroom, usually a half bath in each one, and there's a combination of just half bath. Some of them have a small reception area and some of them have a small office area. In the past, we've done buildings like this before. It usually tends to be landscapers, HVAC guys, plumbers. That's why we put a mezzanine in because a lot of these guys, the only way they can make things happen is to actually have the materials on site that they'll load into their trucks. Electricians will normally have all their extra wire or all their extra power panel as well as tools in the mezzanine area. So the first building you looked at, that was the 8,100 square feet. And we broke it into an A, B, C type design. And like I said, one of them, at the minimum, has just bathrooms at 1,300 square feet. The other one has bathrooms and a small office and a reception area.
So the mezzanine is only for storage of materials?
It's only for storage, that's correct.
And it's a correct situation where it's only to be built if requested by the tenant, right?
That is correct. You're going to find out if it's a We've done these buildings before and it tends to be the small-time contractor and they're always looking for storage space. And like, for example, as I said before, landscapers will go in, they'll change spark plugs in their stuff, they'll sharpen the blades in their millers, they'll do that type of stuff inside. And like I said, during cold weather, when the landscapers are around, they like to still store their equipment inside.
Would your client be willing, as a condition, should the board view this favorably, that no work on vehicles should be conducted outside?
Except
Except for Netto himself?
Yes.
With respect to the tenants?
Yes.
Sheet A2 just shows you the elevations of the 8,100 square foot building. What it's showing, and also in your rendering, you'll notice there's a standing seam metal roof. Everyone's around the top of the building. There's an insulated aluminum panel that makes up the wall system. And then there's a decorative concrete block at the bottom. Concrete block is used because that stops people from packing things in. There'll be followers that be placed at each one of the garage doors as well. We put the signs, we showed you where tenant signs were. And in the, in the larger building, 8,100 square feet, the building height of that space is 30 Height was 33 feet, two and a half inches. And on the smaller building, the 5,000 square foot building, it's 26 feet, 11 and a half inches.
That's the reach?
Yes, that's, to the highest point, yes.
So those are signs that each individual company could throw up?
Normally what happens is if people come to them, they'll ask you for what you want on your sign. And using Mr. Netto, we then go doing it because you want conformity.
So do you need a variance for the amount of signs on the property?
I don't believe so.
Mr. Johnson?
It's governed by the users and a percent of their wall area. Front wall area.
I just store a lot of signs for the way they have to come back.
I think you would cover it with, how many users would be the maximum in this?
14 garage openings.
You would have a maximum 14 garage opening. And the signage would be basically on the door or over the door.
Right now, we have something like, just adjacent to the door, a couple of square standing sign out the road.
Yeah, that'd be, I'm sorry?
And we have a freestanding sign
Yeah, that we have to talk about. You in charge of that?
Well, I was.
I can spell.
I think the best way to handle is the number of tenants. And pin down the size on those. And generally would be like professional office, nameless sign.
Okay.
Two and a half, three square feet. Which is The, as we were talking before, on the building, you'll notice some of the drawings that we actually have wall-mounted signs. And as the engineer said before, the mounting height is like 18 feet. We'll show you a picture of those. Those are downlights. Those are actual lights that are not casted out. They're actually built, built into the downlights. And then what we did is we put small lights over each one of those light areas. We didn't want to have illuminated signs. We figured we would eliminate the sign itself in opposed to having it backlit. Going on to A3, A3 shows you the same thing we just talked about for just in the 5,000 square foot building. Same thing, we located a bathroom on opposite end of that space. And the rest of the space is storage area.
Mezzanine as well?
I'm sorry?
Mezzanine area as well?
There is no plan right now for a mezzanine area. And the reason being is that that equipment tends to be a little taller than a guy coming in with a pickup truck or plumber. So you can still put the mezzanine there, so there'll be clearance in there, but you wouldn't do it mostly from the top one. The only you could do there is you could actually have, if they chose to, you know, they could run alongside a wall, if that makes sense. But the problem is the equipment's big, all the tools and things and parts are heavy. So you don't want to have to This particular drawing, SS1, is the sign drawing. And we did some revisions to it. We showed on there where there are 15 tenant spaces to build in. As we said before, we don't believe he's going to have that many people. He's hoping that I'll have just a couple. But basically, we did a freestanding sign, we did the details for it. We showed how it was going to be lit on the ground. And we actually gave you the actual cut sheets on that equipment. And then we also, in the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see those are the wall-mounted packs. And in the upper corner are the lights that go for each one of the lights, the signs that are on the building. And they're solar powered. Be controllable by, you know, for a bit of a time.
How big is that? Yeah, how big is that? How, start with the height?
The overall is 10 feet max.
That seems to comply.
10 feet max, and it's 7 feet overall, 6 feet on the sign.
Does it exceed 64 square feet in area?
Will it? Yes. Well, it's 4 feet 11, 4 feet 11 by 16. So that'd be 5 by 60, 30 feet.
And is it, where is it located?
It's on the engineer's site plan, coming in off the
There is a dimension there, I can't
Which one, John?
There is a dimension on the setback from the sign.
As soon as you come in, the entrance off of New, you'll see a little line right there in the Back on, sheet F2 of the colored sheet that Mr. Petrie presented.
Well, I'm looking at section 430, death 289 for this district. And it says, "Freestanding signs shall be permitted as follows. No freestanding or monument sign shall exceed 10 feet in height. The maximum width of any one side of the sign shall not exceed 15 feet. And such signs shall not exceed 64 square feet in area."
64?
64 square feet. So you're, you're good on that?
Yep.
Such signs shall be set back 20 feet from the property line. Are you, are you good on that one?
Is 20 or more?
20 feet. S33.
So you don't need a variance?
So you're good on that? And one such sign shall be permitted? So you only have one, so you're good on that? So you're saying, it seems like you're good on the monument sign. I just, I'm just not sure about the building signs. You think you need a, you think you need a variance for the, for the each tenant's sign?
Mr. Chadwick on that?
I thought what we do is restrict the number of tenants. And the signage for each tenant would not exceed 3 square feet.
I think that's, you think that, well, so if there's a variance that's required, that's the condition of the granting of variance.
So does that eliminate the need for variance when we get?
That's where we're going to have to dig further into the
I'm just deferring to Mr. Chadwick, that was a question for him, not a statement. I completely defer to him.
We had on our drawings where those signs are located. We had done, I guess, the mass of the town of Clark. And for example, it says, "Maximal area of building sign, 1.5 square feet per one foot of linear width of building wall. 1.5 times 100 equals 150 square feet max. Proposed signage area is 76.66."
Okay, so it's
Looks like we're getting that also.
Okay, so you think you're complying?
Yep.
Okay.
And variant, and the resolution approved can say that we will comply with the sign ordinance of municipality.
Okay, great. So we don't have to deal with that?
Should say we did comply.
We are complying with it.
Plans indicate they will, they will comply and they shall
And they are complying.
Yeah, would you explain the little, I guess, the landscape areas or walkway areas between the various sections? How does that work? Those little bump, they're in the front of the building and the back of the building? I don't think your exhibits show it. It might Well, yes, that exhibit shows it.
They're plenty of areas right there. And a walkway in between.
And a walkway in between it. It's grass on either side of it, John.
Is that what it is, just grass and then that spot on? And then basically a walkway to the front door?
Okay.
Mr. Coleman, your SS1 that you had up there before, because you caught my attention when you said that the wall pack lights. I don't have that sheet. My SS1 is revised November 3rd. And all it has is the freestanding sign. It doesn't have
You have revision 1? So this is 10-9-25, revision 1?
No, that's not in the package. I don't have that set. I don't know, does the, does the board file have that set?
I don't think so.
I don't know, I don't believe that I submitted it, you can't.
Thank you.
Is anybody else?
You should definitely mark it.
Yes.
Make sure Nora
Yeah, make sure Nora has it. That'll be A3.
What's the date on it, Doug?
Oh, you want the date of this?
Yes.
The date of this is 10-9-25.
Oh yeah, we don't have that. Was that a whole package with revision? Okay. Yeah, sure. Yes. What, so can you describe what's changed? Other than what Mr. Lemanowitz just pointed out, you know?
That's the only thing that's changed. We have a comment letter asking us to go back and clarify. One of the other comments was, how do people know when they come in the site which way to go? And we actually showed arrows at the sign that showed people where to go. Property is a one-way traffic. So people come in, they'll see space 1, 2, 3. If they know they're at 15, they'll go behind. But we did put the arrows on that. And then they asked us to give them the actual cut sheets for the lighting.
Do your other sheets change your
No.
Please, submit it?
No.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Lemanowitz?
Not at this point, Madam Chair, thank you.
Board members, any questions of testimony given?
Thank you.
Next witness, this is our traffic expert.
I'll put a record question. Questions of the audience? Sina?
Lee Klein, our next witness, licensed professional engineer, engineer of specialty traffic.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth? The whole truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
My name is Lee, middle initial D is Daniel Klein, K L E I N. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is currently in good standing. I'm also a nationally certified professional traffic operations engineer. I'm the principal of Klein Traffic Consulting from West Orange, New Jersey. I've been accepted as an expert in traffic engineering and parking analysis before well over 150 boards throughout New Jersey, as well as Superior Court, Indian Oregon, and Union County.
Qualified?
Thank you.
Please, would you give the board the benefit of your observations and conclusion of perspective of traffic generation and impact of these projects?
Certainly. I prepared a traffic engineering and parking evaluation report dated April 12, 2024. And in that report, I calculated the trip generation a couple of different ways. We looked at the traditional Institute of Transportation Engineers, Trip Generation 11th Edition under Specialty Contractor. We know that today there are 36 total employees on the site and two single-family homes. So in our trip generation table, table 1, in the back of the report, we generated the trips during the weekday AM and weekday PM peak hour. That's one hour between 7:00 and 9:00 in the morning and 4:00 and 6:00 in the afternoon. Then we also looked at, again, specialty trade contractor with 38 employees. That's what's going to be proposed at the site. And again, calculated that trip generation for the peak hours. Now, this is a unique site in that the peak hours of the property, of the users within the property are much earlier before the 7:00 to 9:00 AM peak hour during the weekday. They're tend to be between 4:30 in the morning and 5:30 in the morning when the employees will come in in their personal cars, park their car, take out their vehicle, and they're gone before the 7:00 AM peak periods begin. On their way back in the afternoon, the
On their way back in the afternoon, uh, the peak hour tends to be between 2:30 PM and 3:30 PM. And again, that's before the 4:00 to 6:00 typical, uh, peak hours of the adjacent roadway. So when we looked at the trip generation, um, with discussion with my client, we looked at the number of trucks, number of employees, and, and did the trip generation numbers for that. And that's how we did the alternative trip generation calculations at the bottom of that table. So again, we looked at the existing with 36 employees. We looked at how the employees come in in their personal cars. In some cases, two separate personal cars come in. Those two employees get into one truck and leave. That's why there's 36 coming in and only 26 coming out during that early morning peak hour. Uh, in the afternoon, when they're coming back, they're coming back in their work trucks, and then they're getting into their personal vehicles. And that's why the number is a little bit higher, because they're getting into separate personal vehicles to exit the site. And basically, as you heard earlier, we're not expanding particularly the use. We're really cleaning it up, organizing it, and making it so that it's more aesthetically pleasing as well. So that's why the generate, the trip generation numbers are basically the same. Right now, we have two single-family homes and 36 employees. In the future, we're gonna have 38 employees. So again, it's not really so much a traffic impact, uh, type of use. It's really just the parking. Let me get into the parking numbers now. So again, we looked at.
What sheet has the error?
For SP3. So I'm referring to SP3 as part of the set that Mr. Petrie was giving you. When we look at this site, um, we have, quantify the number of parking spaces that we have. We've got 18 parking spaces in the front that face New Road. There are 14 garages, each with their own parking spot. 14 driveways in front of the 14 garages for another 14 parking spaces. And then we've got the ability to park 14 vehicles towards the back, three on the side, six in the back for the handicap. And then we've got the parking inside the building. So we've got a total of 61 parking spaces on the site. And as you heard, I think Mr. Petrie may have started to talk about it a little bit, but as I said earlier, uh, an employee will come in in their personal car. They'll either park in front of the driveway or the neighbor's driveway, pull their car out, put their car possibly back in the drive, into the garage, take their car out, and when the next employee comes, he'll park in the driveway. Or they'll be able to use the spaces in the front to be able to jockey their cars. They'll park their personal vehicle, bring out their truck, put their personal vehicle inside. And then when they come back in the afternoon, they'll have the ability to jockey their cars.
We're assuming it's just two ablaze for each of these spaces?
That's what we're averaging. We're particularly, you know, it could be a, a single plumber that just goes out by himself. It could be a plumber without. And we're assuming they'll come in.
It could be more than two people.
Well, we're talking about one work truck and typically two. If there's, like landscapers, the landscaping foreman or whether the chief would come in, he would pick up the vehicle, and then he'd probably pick up some of the other employees.
If they had more than two vehicles, they're gonna take one, one unit.
Got it.
And so that would, of course, be a parking situation.
So, again, so from a practical standpoint, um, we're looking at approximately 42 parking spaces that we think are required. We're looking at, at, based on the requirements, half a space per employee, which is, like I said, 28 employees. Half a space is 14, 14 vehicles. One for each of the vehicles is 14 more. And we've got nine dump trucks for nine more. Nine employees, again, at the half is four and a half. The mechanic is a half. We add this up, we get 42 parking spaces required. And as I had said before, we've got 61 parking spaces proposed on site. So we exceed that. The, as you heard a little bit before about the office space, there's small office, uh, space for somebody to maybe do their paperwork afterwards or do scheduling beforehand. So we don't think that's going to be an extra employee that'll be generated. It'll just be an area for that person to do some paperwork, some billing, and scheduling.
Can, can you just reiterate how you got to what you believe to be are the required number of parking places?
Certainly. So 28 employees, at half a space per employee is 14. Then there's 14 vehicles. We've got 14 parking spaces, 20 each for them.
Can I interrupt for a second? When you gave your testimony before, your client has how many employees?
Two.
Yeah, the mechanic.
There'll be two.
Okay, I misunderstood that. You said something like 34.
36, 36 and 40.
Total for the whole site.
That's how you, okay.
Yeah, for the whole site.
Your client currently operating on this site has how many employees?
It's, it's, I guess, existing, it's our client, and then he rents out some of the space in the yard for others. And we've added up, there's 36.
So some of those people may be in these, in this new building, and they may not.
Correct, yes, yes.
But your, the 5,000 square foot building will be for your client exclusively.
Correct.
And there are just two employees.
Correct, it'll be the mechanic, I think, and one other, or?
It'll be, the mechanic will be the only employee outside all day long.
Right.
There'll be people who drive here in the morning to pick up the trucks. There are going to be persons back here in these nine spaces, 10 spaces.
Their employees.
Correct.
Many are there.
Who will leave their, their personal vehicle there, take the trucks out for the day, come back at the end of the day and switch again to go home. So they will not be there. There'll be one employee outside.
How many are there of those?
There are six of those.
Okay, so you have two in the building and six that are taking equipment off the site.
Correct.
So that's eight that we would add to the 32 that is the new building.
36 altogether.
Okay. Because you've got, you've got 13. Is that what I'm doing wrong here, Tom?
Well, that, that was why I, I mean, I kind of went to some length, because the calculations for the parking and the ordinance and how this all works. Part of the issue here is that, um, you've got the garage area, and that's supposed to be one space per 500. Then you've got industrial areas, one space for each two employees. So that's where I got another 19. Then you've got one space per each manager. So if you have 14 units, it would seem you'd have 14 managers. And that's kind of why I added all this up like that, because to be honest with you, it, it seemed like an awful lot, but that seemed, that's where the, how I, why I did that, uh, to show the numbers in. For instance, just for the office space alone that is noted in the, in the traffic report, there's 25 parking spaces required just for the office space. So, you know, and I, and I guess that's why we're, we're going through this, trying to see how, how all this parking is going to work. Because somewhere in the application, and unfortunately, I have the comment, but I didn't specify where it came from, it said that the apron areas of the larger building will not be used for parking or loading. And that doesn't seem to be what we just heard. It sounded like you said that somebody might park outside on the apron.
Well, it's, it's a driveway. We're talking about the driveways in front of each of the garage.
Right. And, and, and.
What he's saying, he's gonna, it's different, it's gonna be temporary just to shift. And then when the cars, when the trucks leave, the cars will pull into the garage, into the garage and not park out front if there's.
Okay, that, that's not what I thought I heard. So that's why I'm saying it.
It sounds like one.
Yes.
The truck would come out, one car would go in, one car would be in front.
Yeah, and there's parking in the front for those cars.
Okay. I, again, I thought I heard that they were gonna park in front of the doors.
So in the, from a few, I mean, I don't want to testify, but logically speaking, if I'm a landscaper and I'm going out for the day, I don't want, when I pull back, my car blocking the entrance to my garage door, because that's gonna make it, you do all that maneuvering to get back in.
I understand that, but I thought that's what I heard was that.
Okay, but I think the intent is that the cars that will be left here during the day while the contractors leave will either be parked inside the building or in the front parking lot shown along New Road, because logically, they're not gonna block their own overhead door when they come back. And that's, that's why.
Well, if they're in the garage, if they're in the garage, you're still gonna have to maneuver anyway.
Right.
But if they're in the garage, it's much easier because they have a place to park. You understand, they're gonna be able to shift, they won't be blocking one another. When the car's in the driveway, he's got no place to go. He's gonna pull his car out of the driveway so he can pull his truck in, get everything out of the truck, and then maneuver. He's not gonna leave the car in the driveway, because then he's got no place to park his truck. When he comes back, he's gonna need a place to park his truck. The only place to park a truck is in the driveway. Because he can't trust that there's gonna be any spaces.
I'm, I'm a little bit lost. If he parked, if he comes back after a day of work and parks in the driveway, is he now blocking his car?
But, but, but he gets his stuff out of his truck, put it in and shift. But it's, but it's gonna be the only place he's gonna be able to park when he comes back. If he leaves his car in the driveway, when he comes back in the truck, he's probably have no place to park the truck when he turns.
Isn't he more likely to use the spots funding?
If they're available, but they can be filled up with, he's taking this.
Don't you think it's just big speculation? We don't know what they're gonna do.
And I think, I think we've got off the rails.
We still haven't come up with the right number.
They're all gonna, they're all gonna come and they're gonna shift their cars and whatever they do, and they're gonna make.
You might, you might drive by there in a perfect world and not see any cars.
Correct.
Right.
Which, I guess, I guess the question is.
How many parking spaces?
Do you need a variance?
Yeah.
That's really the issue. How many parking spaces do you, and it's really, the ordinance is confounding in that regard. And I don't really.
Because you don't, and you don't know how many you'll need. The ordinance is, is confusing maybe, but you don't know. In a perfect world, a, a guy comes in, a plumber, he pulls his truck out of the bay, he puts his car in, and you don't see any cars.
In a perfect world.
Oh, in winter, you're doing that?
Right. In the winter, you're definitely doing that.
Right.
Now, Tom, when you concluded adding up the different components, what did these number of spaces you arrived at?
I came up to 94. 94.
92.
And that includes. It's 94, and that includes the credit of the two EV spaces.
Okay. And what they've explained in terms of what this use is, do you think they have adequate parking or not?
Well, to be honest, it's not really clear. I mean, the garages are, are.
It would appear from, yeah, appear from my discipline that you've got parking spaces there regardless of how
Right.
people come and go during the day.
Exactly. And there's no public going there.
Correct.
There, there's no danger to public, there's no inconvenience to public. These are all guys that are going to work, leaving from work. To me, you're gonna figure it out.
Yeah, right.
I don't need to tell them what to do.
They're not gonna park along New Road.
Correct, exactly. There's nothing to protect the public from.
I think we can move on from that.
Okay. So I think that's, that's it for my direct testimony.
I guess that's a conclusion. Have your calculations said 90 spaces? They're saying, well, that's, that's, that's. Are you satisfied with the testimony that they don't need 90 spaces?
I think for, for what the building is, I think 90 spaces seems, is a bit much. But again, without knowing how, with so many tenants and so many potential mixes, it's tough to tell what the actual number is.
Well, just to go through your numbers, like we said, the office area is not gonna generate an additional employee. So those 25, I believe, should be discounted.
I think the board's gonna make a conclusion on whether.
No, no, I'm just trying to, right, I'm just trying to make, make the argument that the 25 for the office could be removed, and the visitor, the one visitor space for the 14 units, I think that's also something that we're not expecting visitors.
And there are 40, you are, it is correct, there are 47 outside spaces, correct? On the plans?
Correct. Okay, we've got 18. We've got the 18 in the front. We've got nine in the back, plus the handicaps are 10, so we've got 28. And then we've got each of the driveways.
And, and, you know, and again, the office space came from, from, from the traffic report, 75, 18 square feet. So none of these tenants are gonna have a bookkeeper, someone answering the phones during the day, someone doing billing, someone, there's not gonna be, these buildings, this building will be empty all day.
Basically, yeah, it wouldn't be an extra employee, correct?
So your request is a variance to permit 47 parking spaces? Is that what your request is? I just want to make sure I understand what the resolution's gonna say.
Sir, didn't you say you had a total of 61 parking spaces?
But you're counting the inside ones.
Including the inside. Inside and the outside.
All right.
And that's not how the ordinance counts it, right?
That's fair.
Okay. Anything else?
We have 44.
Questions for this witness?
We have 46 or 47?
I have, um, there's 18 in the front.
Right.
There's 10 in the back.
Right.
And there are 16 inside each garage. So 18 and 44.
44.
44.
So 44 outside parking spaces.
Correct. Well, or the parking space, one of, 18 of them, 16 of them can be inside the garage.
Yeah, here's the word.
And then there are 28 surface spaces. 16 garage spaces to 28 surface spaces.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the board of this witness and his testimony? Anyone in the audience? Excuse me?
Sorry, just one more, Mr. Klein. Did you do any, any kind of gap analysis on New Road to determine if, if these trailers that are gonna be coming in and out of this place can make it? Because New, New Road is, again, up at Route 46, it's five lanes.
Yeah. Now, we, we, I went out and visited the site way back in December of '23, uh, during the afternoon peak hour. Yes, it does back up both directions from 280 as well as from 46 in some cases. But the vehicles, that's when they're coming back. In the morning, they're leaving so early before the 7:00 AM rush that I believe there, there should be an issue there.
Did you review a comment I made in terms of these vehicles turning out onto New Road? Are you proposing to widen the road along, along the President's property?
No.
Are you?
The number of trips is the same.
The configuration of the driveways, can those vehicles stay in their lane if they go north from this site?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I've got, I'm coming out of the, I have to go out that driveway, and I'm gonna turn on a radius of what?
I'll put radius on this side. It's a, it's a Y driver.
Can I get out and stay in my lane?
I believe so, because you've got the 22-foot width, you can hug the left to make the right turn, you can hug the right to make the left turn. And they're doing that today on the debate.
Uh, with respect to the curving, and maybe this might not be for you, the curving seems to be established, or the curb-to-curb width seems to be established coming from 46. But once it gets to this property, it kind of gets a little vague. I'm, I want to review with the town's engineer again, but would there be an objection, should it come up? To maintain the curb-to-curb width, correct, right now, because right now, it, it kind of meanders again.
Who owns New Road, the town owns New Road, there's a county.
The county.
I think it's a county, isn't it?
I think it's a municipal road. Because it doesn't cross municipal boundaries.
Is that the criteria?
Generally speaking, yes.
Are you not, you're not, you're not proposing any improvements along that road?
No.
Other than the.
Yeah, other than the.
Right.
Well, again, what I was just speaking of is to make the curbing consistent from Route 46 through this site.
Two roads now, that needed around this site, right, Tom?
Yes, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
Just to the.
So why add the widening on the other side?
To the south and now it's from two lanes down to one.
Because it's not currently curbed in front of this building now. It looks like, it looks like the plan does show curving proposed.
So, so the existing?
This is my country teacher coming back.
There, Mr. Lemanowicz is correct, there is no curving along the existing frontage of this property. It's, there's an edge of pavement there. We are showing the, a blocked curb along this frontage. And if what Mr. Lemanowicz is suggesting is that we pull that back so that we hold the curb.
the curb to right of way line width that's along the adjacent property, I, I certainly wouldn't have an issue doing that.
Just to maintain that width, would that impact your potential landscaping in that area or is, is not, is not?
Well, it's, it's, it's only what's within the right of way.
Right.
So if, um, if you look at, if, if we look at S P three, because that's the sheet that has the most detail on it, um, the curb from the right of way on the property to our north, the curb to the right of way is only about three feet.
What are we, you, are you willing to?
But I am willing to work with Mr. Lemanowitz and the township engineer, or the township engineer to.
To match what's there.
To, to come up with a curb alignment that is satisfactory to both of those individuals.
Does that mean you're gonna put a curb in the ground?
We are actually showing curb there now, but where it goes, I think is what.
You said no.
I didn't say no.
So you did. Okay.
But the, I have no problem with, with placing that curb in, in a location that is approved by the township engineer, the board engineer, or both engineers.
Good.
We, we talked about pushing the building back three feet to get out of the barriers to the front yard, can we do that?
We actually talked about, um, eliminating the front yard setback and I think we can do that by reducing the depth of the aprons in the front or in the back. These are thirty foot deep aprons, so if we made them twenty seven foot deep.
Thirty foot deep?
Thirty foot deep. So if we made them twenty seven feet deep, um, they would still accommodate, you know, trucks.
So we got rid of the front yard.
And we could get rid of that front yard variance, yeah.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board of our traffic engineers?
No.
Mr. Lemanowitz?
No matter what you're, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chadwick?
I'm fine.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that has questions of the testimony that has just been given, I see?
So we're gonna bring back Mr. Petrie for a third time, this time as a planner.
Okay.
And if you're tired of looking at him, tell him to cut it short.
Cut it short.
Cut it short.
If you're tired of looking at him, sir.
My wife says thank you.
My wife doesn't.
That's because she doesn't wanna look at you. Okay, so I think what we've established at this time is that we need a, a D one or D two variance for the contractor's yard at this location or the expansion of the contractor's yard at this location, um, and perhaps a D variance to accommodate multiple users, multiple tenants at this location. I think it was, it was offered that with multiple uses, I don't know that that is it, but we're, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it that way. We have eliminate, we've agreed to eliminate the setback, the front parking setback and meet the fifteen foot minimum, the front property line, and we've had, I think, a little bit of an endless discussion about what the parking need is, but we know that in the worst case scenario, as set forth in the G P I letter, the parking requirement would be ninety four spaces. And, and we have, um, we have forty six spaces outside and whatever is considered parking within the building.
No, it's forty four and it was with the indoor base, is how, the last I heard.
Forty four spaces, there were eighteen spaces.
There are forty four spaces outside of the building if you count the aprons as a parking space.
Oh, okay.
We're not gonna double count.
We're not gonna double, well, okay.
We're not gonna do that.
Right.
The purposes of this application.
We have, that's fine, okay.
Forty four or forty seven?
Forty four.
Forty four, okay.
Eighteen in the front, ten in the back, and sixteen.
Gotcha.
Okay. I offer that the proposals before you this evening represent an opportunity to improve a condition that has long existed at this site. The removal of the two residential structures will bring the property closer to conformance with the zoning by eliminating the most sensitive use from this otherwise industrial commercial zone. Additionally, it will take a use that's currently less desirable in terms of appearance and while the applicant has gone to great lengths to screen that with evergreens has been cited before, it's still outdoor storage of materials and equipment and it's still not visually appealing. I think by placing that storage inside of the building, um, we are going to improve the overall condition of this property. In my opinion, the proposal that's before you advances several purposes of planning. First, it promotes the general welfare as it creates a well-defined site that incorporates strategic measures through N J D E P to improve stormwater quality and quantity and restores critical transition areas via, uh, new planting materials. Second, it provides adequate light, air and open space. The project represents a seven point two six building coverage and a twenty point two eight impervious coverage where thirty five percent and seventy five percent respectively are permitted within the zone. Third, it provides sufficient space in an appropriate location for this use and given the surrounding uses that we see within the area that have been recently approved and or recently constructed, I just need to put it on the sheet. I think it's important to show it.
Figure four, which is the last sheet of Mr. Petrie's submission.
So our project site is located right here. This is the two nine, uh, one ninety nine to two nineteen New Road, uh, at two fifty four New Road, I'm sorry, two sixty four New Road, two thirty nine Edwards Road, two fifty Edwards Road and two eighty six Edwards Road. We have very, very similar uses to what's being proposed here. And, and we took the opportunity to take drone photos of the area because I think what you're looking at, I showed you our site before and these are the sites that are nearby this, this last one being under construction. And what you see in these aerial photos is you see contractor's vehicles obviously stored in the rear of the building, you see large buildings that are being utilized for those, that contractor's storage inside. And, and you see that these are being, most of these are being screened by the buildings themselves that are proposed. So I think from this perspective, what we're asking for is, uh, is what I consider to be an appropriate location. An appropriate location because of what is around it and because of the fact that this has historically been used as a contractor's yard. And so I think this is an appropriate location given those surrounding uses. Finally, I offer that the proposal represents a significant improvement to the visual environment over what is already on the property. So there are four separate purposes of planning that I believe support this application. I believe that this site is particularly suited for this use because it has historically been there and what we're asking to do is, is to change it a little bit by allowing multiple tenants, but contain it within structures. So I think that's an improvement. We only need to prove that we advance one purpose of planning. I think that, that we can easily say that we're supported by at least four. When I look at the negative impact, I look at the potential impact on the public good. I start with the fact that the project, in my opinion, promotes the public good. As, as such, I don't see a detrimental impact to the public good. We talked about parking, we talked about a parking variance, we talked about what are the impacts of a parking variance? If someone can't find parking on site, where are they going to be? Or they're gonna park in the street, except you can't park on New Road in the street.
We're gonna make this short, right?
I'm gonna make this short. So in my opinion, placing the stored materials inside the building is an improvement to the overall condition. A defined area that incorporates environmentally appropriate improvements can only work to the advantage of the public good in this area with regards to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Immediate area is home to a transfer station and a series of other similar uses. What we're proposing is actually in keeping with the recent development patterns, which include several sites within this neighborhood. As such, it is my opinion that the proposed improvements do not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Therefore, I believe that the project meets both the positive criteria and the board is within the law to approve the variances that we are requesting this evening and that's all I have to offer.
I have no further witnesses.
Very good. Do you have any questions from the board of the testimony?
No.
No. Any, any, anyone in the audience?
We came it short.
Anyone in the audience have questions of this witness and his testimony? I see that. Would someone like to frame?
What do we, why don't we go through the, what has been argued and agreed to?
So, this is what I've got.
Okay.
The, um, Mr., the netto use is only going to work on his own vehicles. Overnight storage is only for netto vehicles.
Exterior overnight.
Exterior overnight storage only for netto vehicles. The lights will be dimmed to security level at dusk?
End of business.
End of business?
End of business day, I mean, you know, it's, it's a snow day and you've got landscapers and they're out plowing all night. You're gonna have to leave, you're gonna have to leave the lights a little higher than you otherwise would.
Of course.
Business days.
You're gonna enhance the landscaping along New Road in conjunction with the town forester. You're gonna revise the, um, wall-mounted lighting on New Road as suggested by Mr. Lemanowitz. What else have I got?
Well, wasn't that explain that these lights?
We'll work with Mr. Lemanowitz.
The issue, the issue with the lighting, the issue with the lighting was explained by the architect, but he's, I have not reviewed the plan that he was speaking of yet.
We'll work with Mr. Lemanowitz on the lighting and make it satisfactory and make that a reasonable condition.
Right, you've revised, you're gonna revise the plans to, um, to no longer need the variance for parking in the front yard and, uh, none of the tenants are gonna work on their vehicles outside.
I thought we were gonna check, drop the poles from twenty five to twenty.
Drop the poles.
Right, light pole, maximum mounting height will be twenty feet.
And we're gonna work out the curb location on New Road.
Yes.
With the understanding that the twenty foot light poles may require additional lighting.
And you're also moving three feet.
I think, I think he said that, but Mr. Johnson, don't forget Mr. Lemanowitz's letter because he had a series of engineering concerns that we agreed to address with him.
That's a standard condition, paragraph in the, in the resolution. So I'll just keep that one.
Feeling your oats over there.
Just, just trying to help out.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I think, I think that's it, right?
Okay. One of our board members would like to frame a resolution, please?
Sure. I think it's a great case. I think you're taking a rundown, kind of dilapidated use. You have the same use, but you're making it look better. I think the business idea is great because you might actually be taking some of these vehicles off local roads that they now have a place to go and down and, and park their equipment. I think you've addressed.
Actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you approved a variance application for a contractor to park his truck in his driveway a few months ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a great application and I will definitely be voting for it. And what are we voting for to, for you to?
Your draft of resolutions is presently.
Okay.
Presented to us by Mr. Johnson.
Well, the, the variances are, you don't need any Cs now, you just need the Ds.
The Ds.
Oh, the parking, you need the parking C.
Okay.
And the, and the use variances.
D one and D two, just like D one and D two.
Okay. So we able to say application twenty two, hole in forty five, one ninety nine New Road, LLC and two nineteen New Road LLC, one ninety nine dash two nineteen New Road, block seven seven, the lots four and five, zone L I W dash two. Is it preliminary final site planned with C and D variances as Mr. Johnson has said? To construct two warehouses, is that framed well enough?
That's framed well enough.
Okay.
Second, ready?
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Joshua?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Willing?
Yep.
Brinyani? Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been a long road. Appreciate your patience and understanding.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, motion to adjourn?
Yes.
No more.
Aye.
Uh, if there's exhibits there, I'd. You can keep the board, you can see the sheet.
All yours.
There's, it's stuck.
Yeah, that's crazy.
We don't need killing. Not winter yet.
Uh, okay. It does.
We're gonna save the driver. We're leaving.